Thanks Kristin. Welcome council, staff, residents and delegates. To the regular council meeting for Tuesday, December the second, two thousand and twenty five, and we are being streamed live. I'll call the meeting to order at six thirty one with the land acknowledgement. We are meeting today on the traditional territory of many nations, including the Huron-Windat, Anishinaabe and the Hudonosoni peoples. We acknowledge our shared obligation to respect, honor and sustain these lands and the natural resources contained within. We honor their cultures and celebrate their commitment to this land. We would also like to acknowledge the Mohawk and Algonquin nations, whose traditional and unceded territory we are gathered upon today. Hastings County is situated on treaty land that is steeped in rich indigenous history and home to many First Nations, Métis and Inuit people. Thank you. I need a motion that the agenda for the regular meeting of the council of the municipality of Marmar and Lake for Tuesday, December second, two thousand and twenty five be approved. Can I have a mover and a seconder please? Eric and second Jane. Any comments on that agenda? All in favor? That's carried. Is there any declaration of opportunity or interest? Being none, next is the mayor's report. Uh, December, November the eighteenth, I presided over the regular Marmar and Lake council meeting. Uh, November nineteenth, I attended the Southeast Health Unit Finance Committee meeting. November the twenty fourth, C A O John and I met with Ally and I can't say his last name. So, uh, to discuss a proposal to consider development at the mine site. Uh, November the twenty fifth, I drove to Kingston for the meeting on November twenty sixth, which I chaired the regular Southeast Health Board meeting. At that meeting, it was proposed that a number of satellite offices be closed due to such considerations as being underutilized. The board requested staff bring back more information and programs and services would not be affected, but just provided differently. No jobs will be lost, but some duties will be reassigned. Uh, November the twenty seventh, I attended Hastings County Council meeting. And at one thirty, I attended the B I S V meeting in Sterling. At four thirty, I attended the update on the cleanup project of the DeLoro site and deputy, uh, Mayor Stevens attended. Um, next year, the cleanup will commence on Young's Creek, south of Highway seven to the old Marmar Road. November the twenty eighth, I chaired a special closed meeting with, um, John from Waterhouse Recruitment. This is the follow-up meeting to conduct a performance review of C A O John. November twenty ninth, I attended the Christmas lighting ceremony at the Memorial Park. Thank you to the Lions Club for their continued hard work and support for the municipality. The park looks magical. In spite of the vandalism, they were able to replace damaged lights and continue with the program, including providing hot chocolate to the crowd. So thank you. Uh, December second, I attended the Southeast Health All Staff Day this morning in Kingston. They were approximately four hundred staff present from the three legacy boards, now the Southeast Health Unit. Uh, Dr. Kieran Moore was the guest speaker and I spoke his chair along with Dr. Oglaiza, Medical Officer of Health. Dr. Oglaiza and his team have coordinated services and programs to ensure the health services are particularly effective in the rural areas. And tonight is our regular meeting of Marmar and Lake Council. Uh, we have two delegations tonight, Victoria Redderton from Central Hastings Support Network regarding the transit service update. Uh, you want to come up, Victoria? Very good report. Thank you.
Is that good?
Yeah.
I apologize, I'm a little under the weather, so I'm, uh, I'm wearing this to prevent anybody else from getting sick.
Appreciate that.
So you can hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you, Kristin?
Okay, so I'm the executive director at Central Hastings Support Network. Uh, along with our food bank, we run transit. Uh, our transit program serves five municipalities. Um, Madoc, Madoc Township, Marmar and Lake, Sterling and Tweed. Jointly, we contribute to a partner group that, um, uh, uh, files a, um, gas tax application on behalf, our behalf through the municipality of Marmar and Lake. We appreciate you doing that year after year. I, uh, simply I'm here to give you an update on what we've done in the last twelve months. Um, I'm not going to bore you with all of the, uh, all of the details. I'll cut to the most important things. Um, I think ridership is probably what we can focus on first of all. Um, so, uh, twenty-five point nine percent, um, of our ridership, uh, is uh, from residents of, uh, Marmar and Lake. It's down a little bit this year simply because we don't, um, we're taking fewer rides for discretionary purposes. Uh, we don't, um, provide transit to, for recreational or social reasons. We're strictly trying to get people to work, school, developmental programs, uh, medical appointments and whatnot. So, um, that said, our goal for the coming year is to make sure that we expand our service so that we can provide, uh, services for people who need to go out for social reasons or need to visit somebody in a nursing home or what have you. So, uh, this year, twenty-five point nine percent of all the rides delivered, which is, uh, right around thirty-eight hundred trips, were provided, uh, to residents of Marmar and Lake. Um, a small decrease from last year's. We provided regular service to fifty-nine riders. Regular service means they ride with us usually two or three times a week and they're going to work, school or developmental day programs, or perhaps they're a senior that are going to a community living program. Um, with an additional fifteen riders accessing transportation on a one-time basis. More than eighty per- uh, percent of the trips booked in Marm- uh, Marmar were for red- for people, uh, who needed to use our specialized transit program. This service supports individuals traveling, traveling to medical appointments, seniors requiring door-to-door assistance and people with developmental disabilities accessing essential programs. The remaining trips supported riders using transit to travel to work, school and essential needs and services, those as other essential needs and services might be considered. Uh, dental, um, legal appointments, those sort of things. So, um, I'm going to, uh, talk a little bit about specialized transit services. Uh, it's clear that the majority of the riders are individuals with higher support needs. Um, people who are vulnerable or mobility challenged. This suggests that Marmar's transit usage is heavily tied to essential and supportive services, not discretionary travel. This further indicates that special service is a critical component of the community mobility and inclusion. And, um, for us, that's, uh, key when we're talking about, um, stabilizing supports for people in particular need or people who, vulnerable people who are at higher risk of homelessness or, um, uh, isolation and so forth. So, um, our, uh, fewer than twenty percent of the rides are, are for work, school or general errands. This suggests that Marmar transit patterns are primarily needs-based rather than daily commuter-based. Um, we're running at about twenty percent cancellation rate, down from thirty percent. We changed, you'll see from our scorecard earlier in the package that, um, we've reduced, um, the number of cancellations simply by prebooking and prepaying and making sure we stay on task uh, with, um, uh, with that. That's all I'll say about that. So, um, uh, the over twenty thousand bookings that we've made since last November, uh, obviously in the five municipalities indicate a high level of community engagement with our transit service. Even accounting for the cancellations, more than, uh, fifteen thousand successful rides indicates a pretty, uh, steady demand for all of our users across the five municipalities. So our funding comes this way through the provincial gas tax rebate. Um, uh, we receive, uh, just right in the neighborhood of two hundred thousand dollars a year. That's been at a cap for the last three years. There's very little indication that we'll receive more or less. Uh, when we do reach out to people who are representatives of the program, they can't really give us any indication except that, uh, they imagine it's going to be right around the same. Although they do reassure us that it is long-term, stable funding. The United Way provides twenty-five thousand dollars per year. Um, the five partner municipalities, uh, small error with this one, it says eleven thousand dollars. It's actually eleven thousand five hundred dollars and that's collectively. And then the Hastings County Homelessness Prevention Program. Um, originally they supported us to the tune of about forty thousand dollars. Few years ago, last year we received seventy-five hundred. Going forward, our transit program is not, um, was not, was not prioritized. Um, some of the, uh, priorities of the, uh, of the province changed and so the county was not able to provide us with any funds. We do have a number of applications out for grants. The issue for us is that we have aging vehicles and if we had a fleet of vans to get people where they needed to go, we'd be able to buy, provide transit on a daily basis for people. Um, it's just not, uh, we're not able to do that as a nonprofit at this point. Certainly, once those funds come through, uh, through our grant process, um, that'll be something that we can, uh, uh, we can institute. I think, uh, key to this is making sure that, uh, our fundraising, uh, and raising donations, uh, or raising, yeah, donations through campaigns are key to how we're going to move forward in the coming year. Now, before Christmas, we intend to, uh, ho- offer transit to people who want to shop within town. So it'll also be on a prebook, pre-book, pre-pay basis. Uh, making sure that people are able to access the grocery store, do any shopping and that sort of thing. And they just need to call ahead and book a ride. And, uh, it was proposed at an eight-dollar transit rate, but it's probably going to look more at about five dollars per ride, uh, at this point. Um, that was due to come out yesterday, but then I got a call that the heater wasn't working in one of our vans. So it's been delayed a couple of days, but we do hope a few days, um, will be provided for public transit, uh, before Christmas. So, um, I think that's probably, uh, my time. So I just wanted to thank, uh, I thank everybody here and, uh, um, uh, also thank you for the work that you do. Um, uh, doing the application for us, uh, through, uh, through the government, through T-Pawn. It's an arduous process and, uh, and, um, I also wanted to, uh, thank you for supporting year after year, uh, the two thousand dollars annually. Um, I will say that to maintain, uh, and expand reliable service, we do encourage an increase of up to five thousand dollars. Uh, the additional spending would help bridge the gap between our current spending and operational needs, allowing us to continue subsidizing the transit program. I do have copies of our audited financial statements and annual report here tonight, and they're also available on our website as well. And if there's any questions, I can take post to.
Thanks, Victoria.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for, sorry? Go ahead, Mike.
Yes, what, why did Hastings County cut you from forty-five thousand to seventy-five hundred dollars? Do the rural areas not count as far as homelessness and priority? For that count, I think they do for the county. I find that strange.
Yeah, that's, that's a really valuable point. Um, the, the county funding came through the Homelessness Prevention Program Grant. And, uh, we very specifically run programs to prevent people, uh, from reaching the point of homelessness. So, um, our food bank, our tax service, to make sure that people have benefits or that they're receiving as much income as they possibly can through the benefit services offered by, through the C R A process and then also through our transit program. We know that reliable transit that is affordable to get people to work and school and developmental programs are directly related to home security, making sure that people stay in their houses. Unfortunately, the priorities right now are getting people off the streets and into beds. And transit is just not one of those priorities, unfortunately.
But, but a lot of the people that you deal with who are staying in their own homes, and the reason they can stay in their own homes is because they can get to the doctor, they can get shopping and things like that through your service.
Exactly.
If they didn't, you know, they would have to probably move into a nursing home or something. It just, it, it just doesn't make sense. And it's only forty-five thousand dollars. I know when you say it fast, it doesn't seem like a lot.
Yeah.
Well, in Hastings County's budget, forty-five thousand is not a lot.
No, and you're right about that as well. They, they're, I can't, I won't argue with anything that you're saying. Um, I did, uh, make my concerns known when we were informed that we weren't receiving any funding and that that H P P funding is ending in two thousand and twenty-sixth, uh, with no indication that there's going to be replacement funding. Uh, I assume there will be, but that's just guesswork at this point. I, I would hope so. Um, yeah, there's concerns for programs like ours, uh, across the county that are, that they had to, um, uh, defund, uh, this, this, uh, go around. Certainly it's concerning. I do encourage anybody to, uh, to speak to the county if they wanted to, uh, talk about the, uh, homelessness prevention or to reach out to me because I certainly could lend my voice to that.
If, if every municipality you service has as many people as we do in ridership and we cut that and the county has to build more seniors' homes at a cost of, I costed it the last thing when they built the houses down in Belleville for low-cost housing, it come out to over five hundred thousand dollars a unit. I don't think that's low-cost housing to me. I don't know where they're getting their. Just doesn't make sense to build a unit that costs five hundred thousand dollars and then call it low-cost housing. They gotta be able to do a much better job than that. You know, it, it just, they're, they're attacking this from the wrong end. They're providing housing, which is great. But if we can keep the people in Marmar and live here with their friends and all that, that's much better than going into a centralized old folks home. So I just, I, I don't know. I just don't understand it. Doesn't make sense.
Thanks, Mike. Um, any, anyone else have questions, Eric?
Have you presented to the ca- to county council or a committee there?
Uh, no, I just present to our, um, uh, our municipalities. Um, the, uh, I approached the council through our application and our grant processes. Um, but that's, uh, that's all. Um, I do have a number of people that serve, um, uh, through committees that, um, we share information with, but there has not been, um, there's not been any level of engagement.
Would letters of support from individual municipalities help build that case in the request to the county?
Uh, it's possible. A, a letter was carried, uh, with our application from this municipality. Um, it's part of our, our regular grant process. Um, every year, uh, the municipality of Marmar and Lake, as long with, along with the other municipalities we serve, provide a letter of support that go along with all of our grant processes. So, um, yeah, it was there. That's a good point. Um, and I, I hope our, now, I do have to say that as far as I've been told that the county doesn't create the parameters based on H P P, that those are created by, um, the province. And they funnel it through the county and the county determines where it goes. So, um, I can't, I can't speak to, uh, why they made their decision, but I can certainly look at the list of prioritized programs and see that it was, it had a lot to do with shelter and beds and bricks and mortar kind of places.
Um, one other question, can you speak at all to how residents get information about the services that you offer? Specifically the transit with, I know some of the new pilots that you have going.
Yeah.
Um, how would they find out about that?
Yeah, mostly it's word of mouth. Our website, it's under construction right now, but we're trying to keep it as updated as possible. Uh, Facebook is our number one, uh, thing. And then also through our food bank is, uh, we have flyers out and that sort of thing. Now, coming up to, uh, the holiday season, we would like to have flyers out in every municipal office so that people know about the public transit that we're offering for local errands. So, um, if you can look forward to those being in your lobby, that would be great. Yeah.
Thanks, Victoria. Anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much, Victoria.
Thanks so much.
Um, Kristen, do we have Andrew online? Okay. Okay, there he is. Hi, Andrew, welcome. Um, this is regarding the asset management plan update and Andrew, please proceed.
Great, thanks, uh, Mayor and, uh, good evening, uh, Mayor, Members Council. Uh, my name is Andrew Mirbella, Associate Partner at Hampson. Uh, we were retained to undertake an update to the municipality's asset management plan to be compliant with the uh, legislation surrounding the preparation of A M Ps, um, in the province. Um, I do have a presentation which I will share my screen and I will, uh, do my best to stick to your fifteen-minute um, delegation threshold here, so. Uh, right. Presumably everybody can see that, um, so we'll go through the, the slide deck and the preparation. So, eh, firstly, firstly, the municipality has met, um, all the regulation requirements to date, which kind of dated back to July first, two thousand and eighteen with the preparation of a strategic policy. The subsequent asset management plan that was prepared, uh, contained both the core assets and the non-core assets. And we talked about core assets, we're talking about, um, water, wastewater, roads, bridges and culverts, stormwater infrastructures, the way the provinces classify those core infrastructure assets. And the remaining assets were also included, which embedded your buildings, your facilities, um, as well as your vehicles, equipment, machinery and so on. Um, and that was prepared under what they call is the current level of service framework, existing levels of service. Um, what we have to do now is prepare a asset management plan under the proposed level of service frameworks. We're looking at all the same municipal assets, but under a longer-term level of service horizon, um, which looks at where the municipality is looking to go. Um, and that's really the structure and basis for this two thousand and twenty-five A M P update. Um, following, um, the approval of this particular plan, um, there's annual progress report and updates that the municipal staff have to bring forward to council, um, which look at the progress in implementing that plan. So the province is trying to understand if municipalities are, uh, moving forward with the direction of their A M P. Um, and there are also five-year reporting updates of the A M P itself, so complete updates to that plan. And that's all again, all post, uh, two thousand and twenty-five. So I'll go through some of the key, um, kind of outputs of the plan, or at least the draft results. And again, the intention is today to, um, receive some feedback and provide counsel with the content. But we'll be coming back with a fulsome report in a few weeks' time, um, based on the, uh, the results and the discussion today. The overall value of your municipal infrastructure is about three hundred and forty, uh, million dollars. Um, which is obviously a sizable, uh, portfolio of assets that the municipality is responsible for. Your roads representing the lion's share of that is about a hundred and ninety million. Your bridges and culverts, the next, uh, component to that, water and wastewater infrastructure, um, and then your buildings as well. So, um, certainly in, in this case, certain, your, uh, roads, water and sewer, bridges and culverts, your engineered infrastructure, uh, represents well more than seventy percent of the total asset base. Um, you'll see that we plucked in the two thousand and twenty-two A M P value just as a reference point. So it was the value at about two hundred and seventy million dollars a few years ago. Um, we see that that value has increased and, um, you know, a, a fair amount. And part of what's driving that is just the, uh, capital cost to construct infrastructure today is a, um, you know, a lot more than what it was even just a few years ago, partly driven by the COVID um, kind of pandemic and the cost of capital infrastructure and so on. So, um, what we've seen in the market in terms of inflation, that's, uh, really driving up municipal infrastructure assets. So that's what we're seeing here as part of that updated valuation, part of which is also just better data, improved information from the last time we did the A M P. Um, then we look at the value, then we look at the condition of the assets themselves. Um, overall, the assets are in fair condition. Um, we see that, um, over thirty percent of the assets, sorry, over forty percent of the assets are between good and very good condition. Um, what's important from a finance perspective and where I like to draw some attention to, um, is the fair condition category. It's at about twenty-five percent, um, which is, um, important from a management of your app, of your infrastructure. We want to make sure that those assets, if they are in fair, they at least maintain in that condition. Um, obviously if they improve, that's great, but without the proper asset management practices, we could see that kind of swing down to the poor, very poor category. So, um, you know, a sizable share of about a quarter of your assets in that fair condition, which is an important area to keep, uh, an eye on. Um, second then is obviously the assets that are in poor and very poor condition, which on the very poor side, uh, nearly a quarter again in that, in that condition category, most of which is related to your roads and bridges and culverts and which we'll, uh, kind of get into a little bit more on the, on the next slide. But those are based on the condition frameworks that were outside, uh, outlined in both need studies. Um, the roads need study and then subsequent to that is your bridges and culverts from your OSAM reports. So when we look at the spectrum of that condition broken out by asset category, um, starting from the left is on the roads, um, kind of going from highest to lowest. You see the percentages at the top of the bars representing the share of that asset by replacement value. Um, so when we looked at that very poor category, we really see that that's dominated by the roads area. Um, and that red part there, you know, although it's, you know, a decent size of roads, but that's really what's making up a lot of the very poor on the greater graph that we had before that. We see some very pores coming up on the vehicles as well as your machinery and equipment and your catch basins. But what's important to recognize is that even the machinery and equipment, the share that's in very poor, um, and catch basins, that's a, you see it's one in zero percent or less than one percent of the asset base. It's a very small proportion of your total municipal infrastructure. So that's not really the one skewing the overall pie graph. It's going to be the areas such as roads and even the small share of bridges and culverts and large culverts that are in very poor is attributed to that overall, um, kind of poor, very poor category. Aside from that, the rest of the assets are, um, by large and part kind of good or, or fair condition. Um, obviously we see some that have some poor, uh, components to it. Um, but the overall sentiment is that the, the average isn't fair with those exception categories that have some, uh, some areas which have more assets in poor and very poor. So when we do the condition framework, then we get into the level of service. And again, part of what's driving this particular analysis is the understanding of where we're going from our current level of service or our performance that we have today and the target and proposed level of service that we're trying to achieve over a ten-year period. And anytime we think about changing the level of service, there's likely, um, what we call it, lifecycle activities that need to be adjusted for. So meaning that the municipality may have to increase the repair or replacement requirements, increase your maintenance activities, something would need to be done, um, in order to achieve that target. And it could also be a reduction in those activities if we're going to be looking at reduced level services. Um, cost implications usually result from a lifecycle activity change. And we also have to recognize that there could be a risk associated. The municipality has to understand that they don't meet that level of service. And if there's any risks, um, we would qualify that with the preparation of the A M P. I'm just going to go through a summary of the posed levels of services. And you'll see for, along the left, we have kind of the technical level of service measures. Um, and then on the right, we have the actual performance, both current and proposed for each of the categories. And you'll see within the dark green boxes on the left, we'll see Oreg five eighty-eight seventeen in there. Um, that's because those are the specific levels of service measures that the province has identified as part of the regulation, um, which the municipality should be looking to track. Um, so we have obviously included the ones that are required by regulation. Um, but we've also included some supplementary ones at the municipality. Um, we need to do that aren't inside the regulation or regulatory framework that need to be kind of captured here. Um, so the kind of short story on some of the hard services, ones for roads and bridges and culverts on the roadside, the condition frameworks is about a fifty-five pavement condition index, so a P C I of fifty-five, um, which puts it in poor condition, which is, um, somewhat reflective of the slide that we saw, uh, previously. The intention is to, um, kind of incrementally move up those, uh, conditions um, over the planning period, which will try to maintain a minimum of sixty-five P C I based on some of those discussions with staff, which would put it more along the same condition framework is what we're seeing here on the, um, surface condition for your unpaved roads, which are currently sitting at about sixty-seven. And the idea is to maintain that at again, around the sixty-five P C I. For bridges and culverts in the municipality, um, currently at sixty-seven, um, B C I, Bridge Condition Index for your bridges, which is in fair condition. Um, the idea to maintain that in, in that same, uh, minimum standard of, of at least a fair condition. On the structural culverts, there is currently, um, in poor condition at a rate in the fifty-seven. The idea is with some of the recommended, um, um, replacements and improvements within your OSAM reports, um, that condition would be brought up, um, considerably to at least kind of a fair or good condition um, within those, uh, replacement schedules that have been identified. On some of the other. On some of the other levels of service here, as we get into stormwater management, the water main breaks and wastewater backups again, most of which. Are required levels of services as part of the regulation. But in general terms, we're trying to. Either improve or maintain the existing levels of service um that is currently in place. Um and particularly on the on the water and the wastewater side, um trying to limiting the number of water main breaks and boil water advisories. Um and there hasn't been any kind of backups or effluent violations in recent years. Um and that's uh proposed to at least maintain over the over the flying horizon itself. Um the facilities is the last um kind of bucket area here that we'll show as an example. Um the current condition being fair and the intention is to maintain that current level of service um over the ten-year period and. We picked the ten-year target because the requirements of the regulation are to look at a ten-year service level for the purposes of your flying horizon. So then we have the lifecycle activities and we have the cost of managing that infrastructure over the plan horizon. And what we have. Here is the total cost or breakdown of lifecycle costs for tax-supported assets. Um which amounts to about fifty-eight million dollars over the ten-year period. And you see it broken out by different categories between capital renewal and replacement, operations and maintenance. Um expansion activities and non-infrastructure solutions. Most of the costs are. Uh probably not surprising to be on the in the capital-related, capital-intensive-related activities between your renewal and your replacement. Um those are your more traditional um kind of expenditures that you would think about in an asset management plan. Cost to replace your vehicles, the cost to repair your roads, resurfacing programs, rehabilitation programs. Bridge replacements, that would all fall into that capital replacement and renewal bucket. But there are al- also other costs. So think about your operations and maintenance. There's costs embedded within your operating budget to maintain. Your assets, maybe it's some some uh some roadworks, uh maintenance costs, gravel costs. Um all that would flow through the operating budget and we would capture that as part of a maintenance activity within that. Um smaller bucket items, non-infrastructure solutions, just more of your generic kind of studies or things that you do. Um that don't necessarily have any work on an asset, but could extend the life of an asset. And expansion activities, recognizing that there might be expansions in your municipality over the plan horizon that would. Expand capacity and then you would obviously be responsible for that infrastructure once you take ownership of it. And we've tried to build in some form of provision in here in the A M P, although pretty modest uh relative to the grand scheme of the other expenditures. So that's going to reflect, I would say, the ideal spending level. And that's based on, again, undertaking the recommendations from. Your O S M reports, undertaking all the bridge requirements, your culvert replacements. Undertaking all the uh roads need study recommendations and. Replacement of your assets at the end of its life. That comes to that fifty-seven point eight million dollars, which is your total need, and that's your ten-year requirement. Over the planning period. That's based on the graph that we saw on the previous slide. What we then do is we try to match your ten-year expenditures with the ten-year revenues. And that's where your ten-year funding comes into play. So we look at all the municipal um funding sources that we've got right now. Which would mean what is our existing tax-supported capital funding contribution? So how much are we actually contributing or investing in assets from our tax-supported base? Um you know, we look at our kind of revenue sources from grant funding that's known. So we have our C C D F funding. O S F funding, we looked at our existing capital reserve funds. Um and and our and also the share of our tax-supported costs that are funding the operating budget. And that comes out to our thirty point six million in terms of our revenues. What you see there is a is a is a is a delta in terms of our funding gap, which is about twenty-seven million dollars over that ten-year period. And the way we've structured this, we wanted to look back as well as the um. Gap with project-specific grant funding, what we've received in the last five years and then what would happen without it. And. There hasn't been, there's not much movement or variance between the two, simply because there hasn't been a whole lot of. Other project-specific grant fund that you've been awarded for. Um but I I did want to recognize that at least as part of the financial strategy, but. The intention of this graph is to show what the um kind of ideal funding gap would look like, which is around ten percent. Of your tax levy increase. So we would need to be increasing our taxes uh by about ten percent. Um to close the gap in relative in twenty twenty-six, but each year that relates to an increase in spending or investment of about six hundred thousand dollars per annum. So. Meaning that in twenty twenty-six, six hundred thousand dollar increase from our current spending level. And then twenty twenty-seven, we would add a further six hundred thousand dollars to our spending level each year. Um until that gap is closed. And that's going to be um what we'll call as the benchmark gap. And I'll I'll get into a an alternative to that. Um in a moment. So what we do as part of the AMP is recognizing that. You know, that is what we'll call as a benchmark gap, because that is an ideal investment scenario to replace all the assets at the end of its life. Um and and perhaps, you know, that would effectively start to achieve a level of service that might be greater than the ones that we've. Looked at from the previous slide. So we make some modifications to the expenditure profile. To try and better align it with the level of service requirements that we've set, which is trying to. Make sure our assets maintain in that fair condition. We're trying to make some improvements along the way for some of the categories, but you'll notice that the. Benchmark expenditure, which is the ideal spending level, and then there's a ten-year total proposed level of service expenditure level in gold. That is a reduced level of spending in order to meet our levels of services. And it's tried to tie to. The level of service requirements over the ten-year period. What that means is um we have an alternative financial strategy that we have here. And we've. Alter the expenditure profile to tie closer with the level of service needs. Um so you'll see that our tenure need before it was around fifty-eight million dollars. Now our tenure need is closer to about thirty-nine million dollars. You'll see that our revenues under both scenarios don't change. So our tenure funding is still the thirty point seven million. Um that amount of revenue is going to be constant in all funding or all um infrastructure scenarios, but. It's what we're applying that revenue towards. Our gap now is is reduced um considerably because we've made an adjustment to our expenditure profile. So we start to see um again, not much of a variation between the project-specific grant funding scenario or with or without it. But on average, it's about a three percent tax levy impact. So. Um in order to close that gap, we're looking at about a a three percent tax levy increase in twenty-six, which is about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollar. Um increase in our um in our in our um spending profile. Some municipalities and through discussions with staff, it would implemented what they call is a dedicated infrastructure levy. Which means that every year um there'd be a dedicated infrastructure levy based on the previous year's tax levy that gets. Directly attributed to capital asset infrastructure investments. Um because it's a consistent percentage and tied to previous year's levy, we we did that math and it it works out to be about. Two point nine five percent um of a dedicated levy that would get put on each year. And that would again. Be the equivalent to the to the to the numbers above, but that would close that gap um over that ten-year planning horizon. So again, this is a more modest um scenario in terms of um closing the gap, recognizing it's still. Um significant, but it's uh less than the benchmark infrastructure gap um that we showed on the previous slide. I think I see a hand up. Um Deputy Mary, did you want to, do you have a question?
Um, anyone have questions at this point? Okay. Now I will, go ahead, Mike.
Okay, when you say roughly a three percent increase, is that three percent this year on top of our tax levy? And then do we maintain that three percent money going forward? Or do we tack another three percent on top of that three percent the next year, three percent on top of that the next year? So you said a hundred and seventy-seven thousand first year. So then next year, we'd be looking at. Three hundred and forty-seven, three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars to our reserves. And five hundred and ten thousand dollars to our reserves. So that would be cumulative all the way through, right? Not, it's not just tacking on. A hundred and seventy-seven thousand a year to go to reserves. It's a cumulative going forward over ten years.
Absolutely correct. It's it's a cumulative infrastructure levy. So it's the it's we put the one seventy-seven in context to what it would be in twenty twenty-six, but you would add that every year. Um to the base. So it would be a continuous increase in your. Sorry?
Does the province do this? They want us to do that, but I I see the differential between what they give us is absolutely nothing.
Yeah, well.
They want us to raise it all on our taxpayers.
Yeah, and I knew part of this is to recognize that the province hasn't given us. Um the infrastructure requirements that we that we need. Um. But I mean, that does mean that we still need to do our our part here, and I I appreciate the.
And 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 I'm not being cruel or facetious. How much money do we spend every year just reporting on this stuff? To people like you, Henson. How much would this study cost us?
Um, well, the exact number was around twenty thousand dollars or so.
Okay, so if we didn't pay you, if we just took our money and instead of reporting to the province, we could cut our costs by about. Fifteen, twenty percent. They want all these reports, but it's just killing us paying for all these reports. Sorry. Nothing personally.
No, I mean, just we don't, we don't, we don't do this every year ago either.
Like, um, you think, yeah, Ron's got comments.
Yeah, Andrew, on page twenty-nine, I can't hear every single word you say with the microphone or the speaker we have here. Anyway, but on that, on that page, I noticed the buildings are ahead of roads. Can you explain that? On your graph there on page twenty-nine?
Is this the page you're talking, sorry, my my number is probably not the same as yours. Is this the slide that you're referring to?
That's the slide, yeah.
Yeah, that's the slide, yes.
So the buildings in the context of our of the replacement schedule. So the way. The, again, the the benchmark analysis works and why we've made some significant adjustments to it is. In the absence of a facility condition assessment or a need study on it. The benchmark would assume at the end of its useful life of a building, you would replace that building. And you have, you know, thirty or forty years to save for the replacement. But the reality is, and in practice, municipalities don't do that. Um so your needs for your buildings is is pretty large because you're planning for a replacement. Where on the roadside, we've taken what your roads need study says is what's a requirement as the basis for our. Expenditure profile. So the buildings is more, the girl, the green bar is more of a desktop analysis. Um which we've modified down for the purposes of our proposed level of service. But on the roadside, um it's it's based on the engineered assessments of what's what needs to be done.
Okay, thank you.
That help? Yeah.
Thanks, Andrew. Jean.
I have um this two questions. So uh number one. With with the tax levy of either two point nine percent or three point zero two percent. Does that keep um the 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 condition of the assets where they are now, or is that. Improving them?
Over the ten years, if that were to um obviously kind of keep consistent in terms of the increases. There is intention that like your bridges and culverts, for example, there would be some increases in that level of service and in that condition. As some of those key priority um culverts and bridges that are identified in your O S Ms would be replaced. Um and similarly, on the roadside, it's targeting a lot of the roads that are in in poor condition that would be addressed. Um obviously, you'd have to, part of the annual updates and progress updates that the municipality will have to do. Is to assess what those conditions and how they're changing. And you do that as part of your updated roads need studies as well.
Okay, so so we're we're not, we're not necessarily improving everything. We're trying to improve. Some things and keep other as well.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, good. Um and then um our page twenty-seven. You've got, well, what 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 are are the the lifecycle activities? And you have a ten-year period. Is that ten-year period starting in our. Twenty twenty-five year or twenty twenty-six year?
It it's a it's a ten-year period starting in technically twenty twenty-five dollars using the so. Currently, right now, and then over over that period. So wouldn't the first year necessarily wouldn't be twenty twenty-six, but it is. You know, somewhat illustrative purposes, right? Whether it's twenty-five or twenty-six, the the result or the impact is going to be somewhat similar.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Anything else at this point or go ahead, Andrew?
Thank you. Uh so I think I was leaving off on this slide, and then we're going to go into the into the utility rates um components next, which. Um are, you know, a little bit of a a somewhat of a different story and I'll and I'll talk a a little bit about more where we're going to be heading with this. Um given some of the other initiatives that the municipality is doing, but the same same um kind of approach. Um and rationale in terms of how we structured the tax-supported assets, but. The needs here on the utility rate side of of things is still um quite substantial. Um over the ten-year period. And the rate. Supported capital funding contributions are a lot more modest on the on the rate side than they are on the tax support side. Um which means that our our utility rate impacts are a lot more substantive here. Um in order to close the gap. And one of the issues, and you know, I I can appreciate again the. Um kind of economies of scale here. Um with those on a utility rate and paying a utility rate bill. Um it's harder to kind of impose, obviously, significant increases where there's there's cost to operate the system and maintain it. Um outside of your capital contributions. But um all that being said, um. The technical, the mathematical side of things here, there is a that kind of thirty-three to thirty-four percent. Um kind of equivalent rate increase that would be required in order to close that gap, which means. You know, we're looking under the with with project-specific grant funding about four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar increase in spending. In twenty twenty-six and and onward. And then again, that's a that this is the benchmark gap of. Addressing all your infrastructure needs at the end of its life. We've done a similar scenario. Um if we were to make modifications to the. Um investment side, which would extend out the life of assets, recognizing again, you're not going to necessarily. Replace the water mains or some of the pipes at the end of its life. Um you you'll kind of replace it in tandem with roadworks or when you see an issue. Um however. Um even with those modifications to the investment profile, um we still see. Um fairly significant kind of um increases in our utility rate requirements in order to bridge. That funding gap given around the fifteen percent mark. Um I will comment, though, I think the part of our discussions with staff, um you know. As they're you're currently undertaking a utility rate review as part of your legislative water financial plan requirement. Um I think the financial, the kind of a sustainable financial strategy here will be brought forward as part of that utility rate exercise. Um which is which is currently underway, but we do have to report on this part as part of the, you know, the A M P needs here. Um but we have to, again, also do that for the financial strategy and the and the financial plan part of your water and wastewater rate study. But. It doesn't on, it doesn't um, you know, it doesn't necessarily mean that, you know. Um we have to ignore the gap here. I think there's um obviously um additional rate requirements. And additional spending that's even needed on the water and wastewater side in order to fund our our infrastructure over the longer term.
Thanks, Andrew.
I mean, that was my closing. I mean, I just have one more slide, Mayor, uh by half a second. I know I probably ran overtime, but.
That's okay. We were, we kind of interrupted your time as well. Um, does anybody have any other questions for Andrew? Go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, I'm just going backwards here, Andrew. Back to the three percent. That number, you arrived at that number uh including the road need study and the O Sims report, correct?
Correct.
So possibly during the budget process, the three percent will. Some of our projects will capture that. So it won't be three percent plus. Extra, some of that stuff that needs to be done, we'll be capturing at the three percent. Am I am I uh saying that right?
I. Well, uh, no, because I mean, the three, the the three percent is still the requirement to meet everything that's over the ten-year period, right? Um, so if you do address some of that through your next year's budget, um. That just that just that was effectively captured within the funding model that's already here. Um, so it would assume that you're doing that work, um.
I just wanted for three percent. I know we're gonna have to increase three percent.
Hmm.
But is some of that gonna be already completed anyway within the budget because we're using the road needs? And the bridges?
Yeah, whi- which means you're following the plan. And and this assumes you are following the plan, so if you do the work, then that just means you're 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 going in step with the. Financial commitments that we we've identified. So it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't reduce the pressure of three percent.
No, I didn't mean that, but it may capture two things at once, is all I meant. Uh, the other thing was the uh. The water and all that. How did it get so? That's quite an increase. How did we get to that state we're in?
Um. I mean. Part of the the water requirements and the needs have always just been trying to. Keep up with system costs. And and trying to put some money away into into your reserve funds, which we've. Started to do more more recently, but we haven't really addressed the longer term. Um, kind of asset management requirement, so the gap isn't necessarily an operational gap. It's it's again, it's a life cycle or capital cost gap. Um. And and water and wastewater, because of the length of those, the age of those assets, you you tend to manage that a little bit more. Through a reserve fund continuity exercise and look at your more immediate terms. But. It is trying to look a little bit longer outside that period, and I think through the rate study, you'll try and. Figure out if that's the, you know, the right way to go, or if we need to make other adjustments to. The funding plan in order to get to where we want to go.
Okay, Ron. Anybody else um have any further questions for? Andrew? Okay, um, so. Thank you, Andrew. Um, not necessarily information we particularly like here. Thank you for putting the numbers forward for us.
My pleasure. Thanks for having me.
Nancy, did you have any further comments on his um presentation or um?
Um, so what we've been working with Andrew on on this asset management plan, um. I've been using the information we're getting. Because I've already started the twenty twenty-six budget. Um, I think we're headed in the right direction. Um, it's just we're playing catch-up. Right? For years of not putting money into our infrastructure, and that's kind of why we've landed where we are. Um. So it's a lot to do in ten years. Um, I like the fact that there's some other options in there because no one wants us to increase taxes, you know, ten and twelve percent. Um, but I have to meet with the department heads. Right now, the capital budget is. What's driving most of the taxes? In the twenty twenty-six budget, our operational is going to stay pretty close to what it has been. Um, but we need to prioritize the projects that are listed. According to what. Comes out of this.
Thanks, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Um, anything further? Being none, um, thanks again, Andrew. And thanks for working with our staff, and thanks, Nancy, for. Um, you know, giving us a report on where we stand. Okay, um, moving on to public input. Um, public input is time set aside on each agenda of each regular meeting to permit anyone in attendance. To speak on any issue in this agenda. Public input will be received by council only. Comments or clarification by the public or counselors are permitted. Speakers may not speak disrespectfully of any council member, staff member, or any other person, and must not use offensive words or gestures. Is there anybody wishing to speak under public input? Okay. We'll move on then to adoption of the minutes. Um, of the regular meeting of the council of the municipality of Marmar Lake held Tuesday, November the eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Jane and Mike? Any discussion on those minutes? Being none, all in favor? That's carried. Staff reports, um. Or there are no staff reports, committee and board reports, twenty waste solutions and the recommendation or the waste solution minutes for twenty twenty-five. August eleventh. Um, recommendation that foregoing minutes and reports of the committees and boards listed are hereby received for information. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Mike, second? Ron? Any discussion on on that, uh, report? Being none, all in favor? That's carried. Correspondents Association of Ontario Road Supervisors regarding AOR's Advanced Fall twenty twenty-five Edition. Recommendation, it's a newsletter. Um, recommendation that council receive the new newsletter for information. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Ron? Second, Eric? Any discussion? Go ahead, Eric.
A couple of things in here. One, uh, Eric Armstrong from the municipality of Marmar Lake is named. Um, as he's put some work to get his associate road supervisor through AOR, so. Uh, it's always valuable when staffs improve their training and continue on to. Um. Further develop their training. And then on one of the last pages, there's a pretty interesting article talking about um collaborating. With equipment. If we have equipment that. There's a need and our neighbors also need that, but we don't necessarily have a full-time use. Other areas in the province are looking at sharing leases or leasing equipment back and forth to make. That piece of equipment that's a need more affordable, so that's definitely an interesting strategy that. We should probably look at going forward for some of our equipment needs.
Thanks, Eric. Anything further? Being none, I'll go ahead, Mike.
I I saw the same article Eric did. I think it's great. I think. We should be collaborating and. Like sweepers and stuff like that in the springtime. I know a couple of naval municipalities up here have their own sweeper. That they use for intersections and that. But then they don't use it for the rest of the year. We could rent it from them, like Eric said, and we wouldn't have to. You know, we could get more work done quicker, I would think. Ju- just an idea that. From the article, they're renting all kinds of equipment, from graders to sweepers to patchers to everything.
Thanks, Mike. Anything further? Okay, moving on to notice of motions and motions. Jane?
The 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 Lions Agreement, a follow-up, the recommendation, whereas on July second, twenty twenty-four, I made a a notice of motion to bring the then Lions Club agreement forward for the benefit and understanding of all parties involved. But another related motion was made by suspending the rules of procedure, which resulted in direction to staff to create a new agreement between the municipality of Marmar Lake and the Lions Club. And whereas there has been no public accounting of the fees incurred by the Lions Club, which were deferred in that same motion. That. Counsel direct staff to provide a report to counsel on the December sixteenth, twenty twenty-five agenda. A detailing the balance that was owed to the municipality. Of Marmar Lake by the Lions Club at the time of the new agreement, which took place on September second, twenty twenty-five, and and B. Detailing the total revenues waived for the dates listed in section seven of the new lines agreement for one year from the date of the signing of the agreement. And further that, counsel direct staff to provide a report at the halfway point of the agreement. Two years from the date of signing detailing the total user fees waived by the applicable Lions Club project expenses as per section five. D of the agreement in order to provide financial accountability and transparency.
So the motion is moved by Jane. Is there a seconder? One more time, is there a seconder? That motion was failed. Um, Jane, do you want to move to the next one, please?
Whereas each department of the, whereas each department within the municipality of Marmar Lake has its respective utilities and phone expenses related in its annuals. In its annual budget. Whereas the library is not a municipal department, but that does operate out of a a building that is owned by the municipality, and whereas the Lions Library. The 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 library's budget and financials do not reflect the full cost associated with its programs as the related utility and phone expenses are being allocated to the memorial. Building. Uh, under the facilities department. Budget, rather than be being reflected in the library's budget, that counsel direct staff to reallocate the monthly utility and phone expenses for the memorial building to the library's budget effective January one, twenty twenty-six. And for further that that counsel direct staff to establish a reimbursement process with library staff for these expenses.
So that motion Jane has made the motion. Can I get a seconder for that motion? Go ahead, Mike.
Is that all one motion? The end further? Or is that two parts to? Because I have no problem with. Reflecting the expenses there, but. I don't expect reimbursement from the library staff for these expenses. I mean, we pay them already and always have paid them.
Um, Mike, we can't debate this until we have a seconder. Are you seconding the motion?
Okay, well. It's clear. Sure, I'll second it because I want to talk about it. I'll second it.
Okay. Mike?
Okay, so.
I'm just just a second, Kristen? Yeah, okay, go ahead, Jane.
Um, I I'd like, I'd like a re- recorded vote, please. Um, mine. Tent is 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 not that the municipality reimburse the 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 library if that's the way that you're reading it? Mike?
Yeah, that's 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 why, well, I assume reimburse means we're gonna. You know, bill them for that, and then they've got to come back with the money from somewhere. So, I. I'm in favor of doing a bookkeeping process, whereas Nancy, I I talked to Nancy already about this. And I think there is a way that. There's four meters at the building. Uh, we can split those quite easily, and it can be a thing. So to me. If all this is gonna take is we're just gonna allocate those expenses to the library, and when their budget comes in, their budget's gonna go up by the exact amount. Of the heat, the hydro and the telephone. And we're still gonna continue paying them, and they're still gonna get the same amount of money they would before. I'm in favor of it. I don't like that word reimburse because that to me means. That they've got to go out and raise money and give it back, pay for us, pay pay us for using the the library. So that's where I am on this. And and Nancy's still there. I like a comment from her as to whether this is just a bookkeeping. Option, Nancy, or is this gonna create a whole lack of work?
Um, through the chair to Counselor Stevens. Um, so I think what Counselor Lakatos is trying to do is. She wants all the expenses that it costs to run the library captured in the library. So we would give them all of that money in their budget. Right now, that's what we do. They list everything that they need, but you guys approve the budget. And so those expenses would be listed in their budget too, so they would be given the money. The the issue is that. All the bills come to us at the municipal office, so we would pay it. But so now that's coming out of. The budget that isn't the library's. So they have to. Quarterly, probably, we would arrange to do something like that where they would just reimburse us because the municipality has now paid the bills, not the library. But the library was given the money.
Okay, we just can't allocate that money. To them, Nancy, to show where it went? We have to go through all that rigmarole?
Well, if you want to show a clear picture. Otherwise, it's still. Then you would still have the expenses in the memorial building and other expenses in the library. So in order to, if you wanted to run a report, say, saying this is how much it is, you'd have two different reports. Um, this is like a clearer way, you would, it would just show everything. All in one spot. And I think that's what Jane is trying to do.
Okay? Okay, um, anything further, any other comments or questions? Being none, I believe Jane has asked for a recorded vote. Counselor Lakatos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Counselor Derry?
No.
Counselor Dow?
No.
Mayor O'Neill?
No.
That's failed. Thank you. Um. Next is announcements. Um. Anyone have any announcements? Go ahead, Eric.
Um, I'd like to start off by thanking the Light Up Marmar Group and additional volunteers for all the decorations downtown, including all the lights around the poles and the planters. Uh, downtown looks great. Thank you as well to the Lions Club for all their hard work in Memorial Park. It looks incredible at night. If you have family over for this holiday season, please take a walk down there and experience the magical space that we are so lucky to have in our community. I recently attended a few webinar webinars and training sessions, and I'd like to share those. Uh, with all the different associations and organizations that the municipality is part of. We get a lot of emails with different training opportunities. Uh, I try and take advantage of all the informational sessions that are free uh and no cost, so I attended one. The past couple of weeks about, um. Water systems and how to support water system financing. Um. I attended one about modular momentum, which was about accelerating home construction through modular building. Uh, and I attended one entitled. Building a robust visitor economy in rural and remote communities. Uh, reminder to all the businesses and organizations that the Canada Summer Jobs Deadline is coming up on December eleventh. Any private business can apply for up to fifty percent of minimum wage to support youth age fifteen to thirty uh for the so in summer job creation. This Saturday at six o'clock is the Marmar Lions Santa Claus Parade, leaving the fairgrounds at six. So you're welcome to line the streets throughout town. The parade route is posted online. If you search Marmar Lions Santa Claus Parade on Facebook to see the route. Um, you can bring your letters for Santa after uh in the Lions Hall at the community center. Santa will be there for a meet and greet along with. Um, hot chocolate and hot dogs. A reminder as well to please bring uh non-perishable. Food for the food bank, because there will be a collection.
Thank you, Eric. Any other announcements? Um, I just want to announce that we do have a new doctor in town. And I urge you to, um, you have to be registered through Healthcare Connect. Um, so, um, just for information, um, if anybody, and you don't have to. De-roster anymore from the current doctor to get to register for a new doctor. So, um, I would like to welcome the new doctor, and I think we're doing very well in Marmar for um medical services. Um, our clinic is full. So, anyway, um, thank you, um. So if nobody else has any.
Yeah, I do.
Announcements, go ahead, Mike.
Just. Just a note, Quinny Waste is winding up this month. Uh, already E three sixty has taken over and is collecting our recycling out there. Uh, the actual building in Trenton. Is up for sale. Uh, it's not sold yet or any firm offers. We've had several inquiries and people are looking at it. So that'll come through, but as of December thirty-first. Quinny Waste as an entity will be gone. Uh, anybody who's got any inquiries. Should uh direct them to E three sixty out of Trenton. I do believe uh there will be information on the web, our website. Directing people where to go and who to call going forward. Um, the province has promised us that our recycling will not change. Um, we'll have to wait and see after six months a year how everything shakes out with this new company. But, uh. But, uh, the only other thing that's going to continue is part of, it's not part of Quinny Waste anymore. It's going to be part of Belleville is the hazardous waste. You can still take your hazardous waste into Belleville. The municipality will still sponsor, uh, mobile hazardous waste. I do believe we'll have one or two a year, the same as we've always had. Where they come ready on the municipality and pick up hazardous waste. So that all should be changing going forward as of December thirty first.
Thanks, Mike. Anything further? Being nothing, um, we're going to move into closed, um, session. Um, that council proceeding to closed meeting session at, uh, seven forty. Um, under the Municipal Act two thousand and one, section two thirty nine, two, B, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees and regarding a department update and D, labor relations or employee negotiations regarding union update. So can I get a mover and a seconder for that, please? Eric, Ron, all in favor? That's carried.